Number two, City Secretary will call the role.
Mayor Pro Tim Stoker.
Present.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Connell.
Present.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Voskis is absent and as well as Mayor Hendricks. Mayor Pro Tim Stoker, we have a forum.
Thank you. All right, number three, the invocation, do I have Pastor Caraway here? Thank you for the invitation.
Would you pray with me? Father, we love you and we bless you, we thank you so much for this evening. Lord, I want to thank you for every person who's in this room. God, I thank you for all the families that they represent. And Lord, I just pray for blessing to be upon them. Lord, we want to pray tonight for blessing upon the city of Odessa. God, we thank you for this place. And God, we pray that you would do great things here. Lord, we pray that you would bless the city economically. Lord, we pray that you would bless the families that are here. And Lord, in particular, I want to pray tonight for our police and our firefighters. I want to pray for our EMS workers, our doctors and our nurses. Lord, I pray for blessing on them. And Lord, I pray that you would protect them in the difficult work that they have. Father, I want to pray for our teachers as school begins. Lord, I pray that you would help them this year. Lord, I pray that you would energize them. I pray that you fill them with joy to educate our children. And Lord, I want to pray for our children. I pray that this would be a wonderful school year all across this district. Lord, I pray that our kids would be excited to learn. Lord, I pray that they would hate things that are evil. And I pray that they would desire things that are good. Lord, I want to pray for our mayor and our city manager and the difficult jobs that they have. I want to pray for our city council for blessing upon them as well. I pray that you give everyone in front of me now, Lord, wisdom. Wisdom to know what's the right thing to do for the people of Odessa. And Lord, I just pray that you would bless the work of their hands. Lord, again, we thank you for this night. And Lord, I pray these things in the name of Jesus Christ, who died for the sins of the world and who rose victoriously from the dead. Amen.
Amen. And Councilmember Thompson will lead us into pledges.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any proclamations this evening? And any citizen comments on agenda items?
Yes, we do. Matt Gwynn. Speakers are reminded that you have three minutes to speak.
Right now?
Yes.
Yes. I didn't see an agenda item number that you wanted to speak on.
Yeah, I want to speak over police patrols.
Okay, yes, sir.
Because of the rash of car, what do you call it, car burglars? It's everywhere. I caught, I didn't catch them, but I interrupted one last Wednesday, 4:00 AM in the morning. Called 911. Of course, they was gone before they got there. That's the second one.
And what neighborhood did you live in?
That was a week ago, last Wednesday. I got pictures of the vehicle and they didn't ask for them. But, you know, what are you going to do? They got to catch them doing it, I guess. Okay? Second thing, we got kids running around in ATVs on highways. And yeah, it's against the law. It's not funny when a kid gets killed, though, in West Odessa. Are we waiting for another one? To enforce the laws on the books in the great state of Texas? That's all I have.
Thank you. All right. The consent agenda is next. Has everybody had a chance to look at the consent agenda? All right, I will take a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
By Councilmember Connell in a second.
Second.
Councilmember Thompson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Consent agenda. To our regular agenda, number six, to consider the purchase of nine-millimeter Smith &amp; Wesson M&amp;P9 handguns for officers of the police department. Chief Kirk.
Good evening, counsel. As we spoke about it in work session, this is simply a request to change the firearms that we now use. Currently, we're using the Sig Sauer P320 and there's .40 caliber. And there's some issues with that. Number one, the vast majority of ammunition that's now manufactured in the United States is non-millimeter. So it's much easier to be able to purchase non-milliam ammunition. Also, the P320 has run into some issues in other states mainly, but with lawsuits and that sort of thing and with their firing mechanisms. So we want to move away from the P320 Sig and move forward with the Smith &amp; Wesson M&amp;P9. So we're going from .40 caliber to non-millimeter. FBI data will show us that the best non-millimeter ammunition is just as effective as the best .40 caliber, .45 caliber ammunition. So we're confident that we're not giving up quality by doing this. We had a shoot-off between the Sig, the Glock and the Smith. And our officers liked the Smith better than the Glock, which was, again, a little surprising. The great thing about this is that this is a one-for-one swap. So there is actually no money that exchanges hand here. This is budget neutral for the city. We send them our old guns and they'll send us the new guns.
Chief, I have some selling points for you.
Sure.
No history of accidental discharges of the holster, lower recoil, higher magazine capacity, lower ammunition cost and longer service life.
And if you want to know, you know, in the state, you know, some major agencies that use this handgun, San Antonio Police Department, LA County Sheriff's Office. The list goes on and on, so.
Excellent.
It's a proven quality firearm.
Very good. Any other questions for the chief? All right.
Okay.
I don't know exactly what this is. This is your deal, so. As we're considering, we need a motion to approve?
So, so move.
All right, well, I will give Mr. Thompson and then Mr. Haney the first and the second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Number seven, to consider the acceptance of a donation by Kim Ray, Mr. Rogers.
Mayor Pro Tim, counsel, good evening. We are considering accepting a donation from Kim Ray Sales Services. I would like to thank Kim Ray for their generous donation. It's a material donation of pipes, pipe fittings and shelving for the material. This donation will help us tremendously with ongoing efforts in irrigation, repairs and updates to our irrigation and our pools. So we're very thankful for Chad and Courtney and their donation with Kim Ray and their partnership and support of our community.
I know, it was a very long list. Thank you. Any?
That's okay.
Any questions on this or comments?
This is just material, right?
Yes, sir.
It's wonderful.
Yep. It's going to help tremendously.
Oh, yeah.
And I also like to thank Yon with the OFR for facilitating the donation.
Well, we appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Very good. Do we need to vote to accept?
Yes, sir, probably so. And then if you're going to put it in a project or a line item or anything like that, now would be a good time to do that also in your motion. That's up to finance, but if you're going to create a project or something like that, now would be the time to do it.
So. I'm not sure how to say that.
Right. Well, why don't we just vote to accept the material as donated?
Make a motion, we accept the material as donated.
All right. Councilmember Thompson with the motion. Councilmember Haney with the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Wonderful.
Motion passes. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Number eight is a public hearing. We're going to conduct a public hearing and consider the 2025 through 2029 consolidated plan and the 2025 Annual Action Plan for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The consolidated plan identifies the needs in the community, establishes five-year goals and strategies and identifies the resources available in the community to address these needs. Major categories. Categories of priority needs addressed in the consolidated plan are housing, public facilities and improvements, public service, community and infrastructure development. The 2025 Annual Action Plan identifies the city of Odessa's goals and objectives for the period of October 1st, 2025, through September 30th, 2026. There's a resolution here, so. Nyra?
Yes. Good evening. This has been a project that we have started since May. This is something that is required by HUD. We have to turn this in every five years. We have to, this consolidated plan not only includes us as a agency, but more of the needs as a municipality. We did hire Karen Dash. She is from Wilmington, North Carolina. She's the one that helped us conduct this very long and tedious process. Karen?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. So we're talking about community development block grants. They're provided by HUD through a formula annually. The formula is based on population, poverty levels, housing statistics and so on. And they come up with a figure for all the jurisdictions across the U.S. Those funds are used for a variety of things, specifically regarding providing decent housing and a livable environment for folks, as well as expanding economic opportunities, especially for low and moderate income people. The city of Odessa also receives funding for home, home funds. And then there's some other funding streams as well, ESG for homeless people and then HAPWA for people with HIV or AIDS. So with the funds, there are a variety of activities that can be addressed, including revitalizing neighborhoods, again, empowering folks economically and then helping to provide community facilities and services. We have a, there are several national objectives for the program. I already mentioned benefiting low and moderate income people, also preventing or eliminating slums or blight. And then if there are urgent community development needs, they can be addressed with this funding. So as part of this process, Nyra called it tedious, but it's a detailed process. So we have some reporting responsibilities, which we've already heard about, the five-year consolidated plan, the one-year annual action plan, and then an analysis of impediments to fair housing, as well as a citizen participation plan, which is just a plan for how are we going to involve as many members of the community as we can in this process. So here's the process that we've been moving through. We are now in the final phase, the public comment, a public review and comment phase. Tammy provided the information that we haven't received any comments. The public had 30 days to review the drafts. And so we are presenting tonight and hoping for your approval. We have to, this has to be submitted by August 16th, so coming up very soon. So we'll finalize our documents and submit those. So it's really exciting to work on this plan because your community has been very involved. And I appreciate, I know some folks here were at some of those meetings that we had. And I appreciate that. We had over 550 citizens and 20 different agencies providing their feedback throughout this process. We had five public hearings and focus groups. We had, again, 22 folks in our March focus groups. And then we've had over 200 citizens come to our meetings as well. We've had interviews with key partners and key stakeholders. And our community survey, Nyra and Tammy did an amazing job getting that out into the community and getting responses. A few are still trickling in. I never actually turned off the survey, but we have, you can see about 320 responses altogether, English and Spanish language. So the Odessa Community Development Department has really been working hard on community engagement with the public and also with other city agencies and nonprofit partners. And so as a result, this was a really robust consolidated planning process. I worked with a couple of other jurisdictions whose names will not, I will not share, but they're larger. One is larger, one is smaller. But you can see the number of surveys that they had compared to Odessa. So you had a really great response and that's really helpful for this planning process. Other things that the Community Development Department has been working on over the last year or year or so, has been developing standard operating procedures for our home rehabilitations and emergency repairs and so on. Also letting other agencies, nonprofits and city agencies gain knowledge, educate them and train them regarding these services that are available and also promoting those programs to the public so that eligible homeowners can have those rehabilitation efforts done. And the city has increased its work with other agencies, trying to coordinate and provide referrals and assistance to inquiries from the public as they receive them. The reports that you may have had a chance to look at, they've got a lot of, lot of data in there. We just pulled a few interesting data points. In fact, some of these have been updated since the report because we just got something that just came out like a week or two ago. The National Low Income Housing Coalition does a report every year that looks at the wages within a community compared to the costs of housing. And they estimate that for the fair market rent here in Odessa for a two-bedroom apartment is, as you can see, $1,669, while the affordable rent for someone earning minimum wage is $377 a month. So there's a huge disparity. So for, I guess that would be probably, that worker would have to have four jobs, if not more, to be, minimum wage jobs, to be able to afford that. And they would have to have a wage for that two-bedroom apartment of $32.10 an hour. And we know that there are a lot of folks don't make $32.10 an hour. We include some of them here from the Bureau of Labor Statistics data. We also include the household income and poverty rate data here as well. The next few slides are just some maps. These maps are created by, HUD has a CPD map function. And so you can see here, this is laid out. The lighter colors tend to be the lower numbers. They go up to the darker colors. And I know that Odessa has kind of that funky shape with kind of the hook on the eastern side. But you can see here that the lower income tracks, the lighter ones, are located in the south-central areas of the city. And there's, I guess, a couple in the northern central part as well. In terms of educational attainment, so again, the darker colors mean higher levels of people with bachelor's degrees in a particular census tract. And you can see that to the northwestern part of the city and then a little slice of the northeastern part near the legend there, you can see has some of the highest levels of percentage of folks with a bachelor's degree or higher. Looking at median home values, you can see that the highest are kind of in the northeastern part of the city. The lowest are sort of in the, you know, the bottom two-thirds of the western part of the city. And median rents, median rents are a little bit different, I guess. You can see that some of the highest rents are in the eastern part of the city, going right up and down the border there. Now I'll take you through just a few bits of feedback from our community survey. Again, we had about 320 folks who responded to that. You can see that in terms of their housing situation, that's majority are homeowners. But we have some renters and some other categories of people as well. So this shows the annual household income of the folks who responded. The lighter blue or brighter blue is for renters. The darker blue is for homeowners. A couple of things that jumped out at me are that about 52% of homeowners have incomes, reported incomes of $100,000 or more. So, you know, the bars to the very right. At the other end, a little under, I think, 29% of renters have incomes of less than $25,000. So it's kind of a, you know, different profile of the folks who responded. In terms of race or ethnicity, you can see that 71% of renters and almost 85% of homeowners are white. In terms of ethnicity, about a third of homeowners and renters are Hispanic or Latino ethnicity. So the next few slides just talk about what the community said they saw as their priorities. This was again through the community survey. We asked them to rank different needs on a scale of one to three, with three being the highest need, one being the lowest. So you can see here, in terms of housing needs, everything was rated 2.5 or greater, with the highest ratings being for affordable housing or housing for seniors. And housing for veterans was right under that. In terms of infrastructure, you can see that there was a strong, strong support of the need for water and sewer improvements, as well as street and sidewalk improvements. In terms of public services, which groups of folks, you know, need public services, the community felt that public services for seniors, for domestic violence victims and for people with disabilities, as well as people with homeless people, were a high priority. I believe this is the last one that we had ranked. We asked folks about economic development or financial assistance. And you can see here that, again, economic development was very high, just kind of the general category of economic development. But then job training, job creation and retention were also very high, as well as English classes were indicated as high needs. They're all high needs, but those were the highest. And then, as I mentioned, we have these great focus groups and interviews with folks. And the feedback that we were receiving in terms of priorities were that we need to increase the supply of decent, affordable housing, you know, both for, through repairs to low-income families or senior housing units, as well as expanding homeownership opportunities. Additionally, increasing services and housing for homeless people or people at risk of being homeless was considered a priority. And increasing public services for vulnerable groups. And then lastly, in terms of increasing public facilities, one of the things that people talked about in a couple of different meetings was the idea of a day resource center for homeless people, where they could come for services and information during the daytime. But there are also other needs that were mentioned as well, senior centers, youth centers and so on. And lastly, the importance of reducing slums and blight. We did an analysis of impediments to fair housing. What was really enjoyable for me was just to see that Odessa does some really great things in terms of fair housing. And you'll see in the next slide, the recognition that Odessa had received. One thing that's true around the country is that there's just a lack of affordable housing, which just makes it hard for people to access that housing. There's some, we found in the survey that some folks aren't as aware of fair housing laws or how to report a fair housing issue. People with disabilities, and this is countrywide, people with disabilities generally have the highest share of complaints, fair housing complaints, usually due to modifications to homes, you know, deemed reasonable modifications to homes for people. In our meetings, we found out that the cost of extending water and sewer lines could be a bit of a challenge. The lack of rent regulation, I know people talked in several groups about the fact that rents can go up pretty dramatically and over short periods of time. But I do know that, you know, there's a statewide law that governs that, that that's not something that the city can take matters on. And lastly, some of the HUD standards, I won't get into that, but it's in the report if you'd like to read it. This is what I was mentioning, is that Odessa's zoning has been recognized for its flexibility. The Texas Tribune did a study of Texas municipalities around the state. And one of the things that they looked at was zoning and how, how much opportunity is there for a particular jurisdiction to have housing, other than single-family housing, you know, throughout the city? And in 47% of the land where people can build residences, Odessa allows for multifamily housing, or some version of multifamily, not just a single-family home, perhaps their townhomes and so on. And that's compared to, for example, Fort Worth, only 22% of the land zoning allows that. I think I read in Dallas, it was like 19%. So Odessa's quite ahead of other communities in that way. And so in summary, these were what we saw as the consolidated plan priorities based on the research that we had done, the socioeconomic, the demographic research, the housing market research and the rich feedback that your community provided us. And so again, affordable housing, addressing affordable housing through the repair program, through expanding homeownership opportunities and so on. Facilities, public facilities and improvements. Again, the day resource center was one thing that people mentioned, but also supporting youth centers and senior centers. Offering services for vulnerable groups, including seniors, victims of domestic violence, people with disabilities and homeless people. Removing blight and slum from different neighborhoods through community infrastructure work, resulting in improved housing and neighborhood opportunities to increase the livability of neighborhoods and the economic opportunities for their citizens. So thank you for the opportunity for me to share this with you. What comments or questions do you have?
Comments or questions?
Yeah, I do have one. The 2529, the annual plan here. What have you learned? What has changed for possible suggestions and allocations for the CDBG funds? What have you seen change in which direction?
Well, we have seen that there's been a need, a growing need for rental assistance because of our, there isn't a way to control, there isn't a way to control rents. And a lot of, I see a lot of people that are one month away from being homeless. And that's what I see that is huge, is rental assistance. We see it in our school district. We had a meeting with the school district and this last, before school was out in May, there was about 1,600 homeless students. And so that's one of the biggest concern in this area.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other comments, questions? Well, thank you all. And I saw firsthand, you all were everything, surveying and working. So I appreciate your work on that. Now, this does say, conduct a public hearing, so do we need to?
Just open a public hearing and see if anybody wants to speak.
So I'd like to open a public hearing to discuss the consolidated plan. If we do have any members of the public here that want to discuss the plan or feedback, action? All right. Then I will close the public hearing. And I think you have till Thursday to get with community development. I see Tammy's panicked look right now. Before then, we got to turn it in. Thank you all again for your work on that.
Does the council need to approve this tonight? That's what I thought, so.
Need to approve it tonight? Okay. So then I guess I need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the consolidated plan.
So I have a motion from Councilmember Connell and a second from Councilmember Haney. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Number nine, got a, consider a Nunk Pro Tunk ordinance to amend the legal description in the Headley Estates Annex, Annexation Ordinance. This is a correction of the Headley Estates Annexation on the first approval.
Good afternoon. So on January 14th, I brought three annexations in front of y'all. And on one of them, we found a typo on the legal description. So this one on Headley Estates, on the township south, it should be Townsend 2, as opposed to the one that was brought to y'all in January. And that is just the one number difference that we need to make the correction. And once that is approved, I can make those corrections with the state and the tax appraisal office as well.
Any questions?
Mayor Pro Tim, if I could.
Yes, sir.
In the future, if it's all right with the council, we were going to start adding language in these ordinances, especially with the long, long ones, but all of them really. Authorizing the mayor. but all of them really, authorizing the mayor to make modifications, as long as the intent and the meaning and the amount of the ordinance or resolution wasn't changed. Because under our city charter, once y'all approve an ordinance, it has to be published and it has to be filed in the city secretary's office, and then nobody has the authority to make any changes. So it has to come back to you, and that's why we're here tonight. And so you're gonna start seeing a paragraph in there that the mayor has the authority to modify, scribble errors, clerical errors, as long as the amount's not changed, the intent's not changed. And that way, that will avoid this, and hopefully, y'all won't have to see it again. And we use the word non-pro-tun because we debated it, and it just relates back to the date the ordinance was originally approved. But anyway, we're gonna try to add a paragraph and take care of this in the future. You shouldn't see these again.
So from, from legal on that, with the approval, this would make the original decision legally effective from its intended date, as if no error had occurred.
Councilmember, here, here's, here's the thing on that. These annexations are very time-sensitive and they're very date-sensitive. We debated that in our office thoroughly. The best way we thought to handle it was do it as a non-pro-tun, because Texas law is very clear, if you do it as a, as a non-pro-tun, it relates back to the date that it was originally approved, and it reads as if the ordinance was adopted that way.
Right.
If we had said clerical error, would be, would be a bigger debate. But we think we're okay, we think we're fine, that's why we're gonna fix it in the future. We're not, we're not gonna worry about this again.
Sounds good.
But you raised, I mean, Councilmember Conell, you raised the issue, and believe me, we kicked it around a lot, how's the best way to handle it? We thought non-pro-tun was.
All right, any other questions or discussion? And I will entertain a motion to...
So move. Second.
Move forward with this. So I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson and a second by Councilmember Conell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number ten, consider and take appropriate action regarding payment for services provided by Sports Med Properties LLC. This is a resolution, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and council. Yes, before you have a, a resolution that will authorize payment for services rendered by Sports Med Properties LLC, this development agreement with Sports Med Properties LLC was actually entered into back in October of two thousand and twenty-four. This agreement, this agreement required that Sports Med Properties provide construction plans for the multi-sports complex to be located on Fodry Road, obviously the one we all know about. Sports Med has provided the complete construction plans to the city, so therefore, they have fulfilled their end of it. And according to that agreement, are now owed two million, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. This would authorize that payment. Please understand, though, even though you authorize it tonight, we will not cut a check until we are a hundred percent satisfied with those one-hundred percent plans, right? So even though they provided the one-hundred percent plans, we're looking at them, and we will make sure that everything is a hundred percent before we cut that check.
All right.
No, I have not, I have not seen it, but I know it, we're having it reviewed by...
Internally, we're reviewing it, and then also, we've entered into a contract with Bureau Veritas to also review plans as well, so.
Right.
Furthermore, this could be paid for out of the CO that was just, actually just funded, I think, maybe today.
On the fifth.
On the fifth, okay, so the fifth. Very good.
That takes care of, that takes care of that other issue.
It does.
Yes, sir.
Pretty much. So I, I would move upon the blessing by Veritas and staff on the plans being as desired, I guess, with approval.
Got a motion by Councilmember Thompson.
Second.
A second by Councilmember Haney. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Thank you all.
Motion passes. Thank you. Number eleven, consider appropriation of funding for sports complex project.
Good evening.
Is the appropriation for remaining portions of the sports complex.
Yes, sir, good evening, council. Okay, so this is just to formally appropriate funding that you all have already expressed will go towards the sports complex. The forty million, of course, we've already received last Tuesday, we received those funds. The seventy-five million from excess general fund reserves that were uncommitted, unreserved, and then the fifteen million from hotel motel, which again was uncommitted, unreserved. So this action will formally appropriate those funding sources and earmark them in our system so that they will go towards the sports complex. Any questions?
And this is, and this is a big step, because all the money's there, and Sports Med will be here Thursday, so.
Very exciting.
They're gonna be on-site, just so the public knows. Everything's in place, and I guess we'll start pulling permits pretty quickly as long as Elizabeth will let us, but it's up to her. I don't wanna get too cocky, so anyway. So with council's approval, I would love to make the motion that, that we accept, we remove the funds for the complex as described. Again, these are funds that were in the bank, that we weren't using for anything, they were uncommitted. And I'm so glad we were able to find loose money that we could use. So it's a, it's a good day, and so I'm anxious to get started and, and get the new complex done. So thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes, sir. So I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson. I have a second by Councilmember Haney. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Two years and six months. No longer than that. Finally done.
Longer than that. Very good. And number twelve, consider a resolution determining the costs of certain supplemental services to be financed within the Winmo Crossing O and M Public Improvement District, approving and amending and restated operations and maintenance service plan and assessment plan, including a proposed amendment role, assessment role, and directly, directing the filing of the proposed assessment role with the city secretary, Ms. Shantsey.
Thank you again. So this is part of what I explained during work session for the PID. So this is just a resolution to be able to call the public hearing that will take place on September ninth.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion.
All right, I got a motion by Mr. Mitchell and a second by Mr. Conell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number thirteen, discuss and consider all city of Odessa commissions and board members, including appointments, reappointments, removing or modifications, including the following. I'll let city secretary get through this.
Thank you, council. For the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, appoint Gino Montez.
Correct.
That would be Councilmember Conell's appointee to the board.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if council is ready to appoint the Historic Preservation Commission of Roland Spickerman, David Vincent, and Jimmy Pecock.
So I know traditionally, we've all done these kind of one at a time. We need to go ahead and continue that?
It's just your practice, I mean...
That's what I do, is cleaner, I think.
So I will start with the Parks Advisory Board, so I will entertain a motion for Mr. Montez.
So move.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Conell and a second by Councilmember Haney. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. So welcome Mr. Montez to...
Good man.
Parks and Rec. On the Historic Preservation Commission, I'll entertain a motion for the three appointees.
So move.
Second.
And a motion by Councilmember Thompson, a second by Councilmember Haney. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes, welcome back and welcome. They're meeting Wednesday for the first time, and what, what do we hear? Twenty-three...
It's been a long time.
It is historic. All right, number fourteen, so pursuant to Texas Government Code five fifty-one dot one oh one, the city council will hold an executive session, which is closed to the public, to discuss the following matters as permitted under the following sections of the Texas Government Code, A, section five fifty-one dot zero seven two, deliberation regarding real property, an open meeting would have detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with third party. The real property is described as follows, some thirty-three acres, more or less, in the, in the S two of section thirty-three, block forty-two, T two S, T and P Railroad Company Survey, A dash one twenty-four, Ecto County, Texas, some five to ten acres in the W two of section thirty-four, block forty-two, T two S, T and P Railroad Company Survey, A four sixty-nine, Ecto County, Texas, B, executive section, session deliberations regarding real property, pursuant to Texas Local Government Code five fifty-one dot zero seven two, legal description, block zero zero three, lot zero zero four, addition Lico Industrial Third filing detention basin. So do I have a motion to go into executive? Motion by Councilmember Conell, second by Councilmember Haney. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are now in a...
And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
All move.
Oh yeah.
Do we have to move to do that? All right. Well, entertain a motion to come out of executive.
Don't move.
Ask Councilmember Thompson. Ask Councilmember Connell. All of them are A.I. Eyes have it. There was no action taken at executive. So entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
That was Connell and Segway Thompson. All of them are A.I. All right, out of here.